Good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of the Somersville City Council on this 14th day of November, 2022. I'd like to welcome all of our guests tonight and get right into tonight's very lengthy and lofty agenda. So with that said, welcome everybody. And the first item on the agenda is consideration of the council minutes of the meeting we held October 24th of 2022.
Let's go through and wait for reading.
We have a first and a second. Are there any changes or amendments, counsel, of those minutes as they were presented in your packets? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Public comment, Amy. No, okay, moving right along. Okay, counsel, this is a long time coming. Tonight we have on the agenda the approval of the documentations or documentation for the purchase of the sports complex, or I should say recreational complex, purchase agreement and other documents. So what I'd like to do is get a motion on the first document and then go into discussion. At this time, I'd ask city attorney Greg Tucker to come to the podium. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the recreational sports complex purchase agreement.
Let's go through the second.
We have a first and a second. Greg, I'll let you address the document and then we'll turn to council comments.
Well, I know everybody's had the opportunity.
We've had speakers and she said no.
Okay, not a problem, no, no problem, no biggie.
Wouldn't hurt my feelings. I know everybody's had the benefit of that document for quite some time now. There has been no changes to this document since it was sent out to you, so if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to go through it and address those questions.
Okay.
There's been many, many different versions of this, but this is the last one that was sent out to you that you had for probably a week, week and a half.
Okay, Greg, so I'm trying to, what did it highlight it? Does this reference to acreage?
The acreage will be attached as an exhibit.
Okay, that's right, yeah, okay, yeah. So that is, that has changed because it went from, if you want to address that.
Yeah, what they did, they had a barrier around, and that's gone. It's 129, it's on the closing statement, but you have a draft on the top of this, slightly over 129.
128.086 acres, just slightly less than 129.
That includes the two roadways. It's really one roadway, but two, at times, two different entities own property that the roadway traveled over. Now that's been conveyed to the one entity now, so it's really just one road.
And if I'm not mistaken, they did away with that 20-foot barrier?
They did. Yes, that's where we picked up the additional 38.
That's the original 38.
Yeah, it was 125, now it's 128. Okay, council comments?
You know how council, you know I do.
I know you do.
I'm gonna read this, in the interest of time and everything. I know all of you expect me to say something, so I will. My thinking on this is nothing to do with who the seller is, and I have not had employment, business dealings, family ties, political contributions, or close personal relationship relative to the seller. I have not had any problems with the seller, and I don't intend to. Regardless of who the seller is, my thinking is the same. Relative to this agreement about the price, I heard from three local businessmen outside our family that I respect, and two seemed to think the price was pretty high. When considering the location, the fact that it has had three or four mining operations as partly hill, mountainside, and is going to require maybe millions of dollars in dirt work and drainage to rough it in for the intended purpose. As for me, I don't really have a problem with the $1 million price tag. About the tax benefit to the seller, the agreement is written to support a tax deduction for charitable contribution and tax deferment for like-kind exchange, and I really don't have a problem with that. Depending on the seller's appraisal, the tax deduction could result in maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars benefit to the seller. So the seller stands to benefit way above the $1 million selling price by virtue of selling the property to the city. About the naming rights, I'm not comfortable with this. This is not usual in property transactions, whether for business or personal use. Now, in this document, there are naming rights reserved for the road. The agreement actually says Road 1 and 2, and a field, and a restriction on what the entire park can be named. It seems to me that the restriction on the park name will keep the people in the community from having any voice in the naming of the park that they are paying $1 million for. This is not acceptable, and I have good reason to believe that this could negatively affect donations from other individuals, businesses, foundations, trusts, and so forth in the future. I say we need to keep our options open for donors. First of all, what is meant by the term naming rights anyway? Agreement does not say what it means. After doing a little discovery on the internet, I saw that naming rights are usually conveyed in an agreement with the wording, placement, presentation, price, payment terms, duration, conditions for changing the name, termination conditions, and so forth specified clearly. There is none of this in the agreement we are looking at. I don't think any of us would buy property for personal use, subject to naming rights like this. I think we can do better. What is a better way to handle this? I think naming rights should be part of a separate agreement. The benefit to the city would be that the property would not be encumbered should the city in the future decide to sell it for whatever reason. The benefit to the seller would be that it would be easier to support the tax deduction, since the property has been conveyed free of any reservations, which I think the IRS would look more favorably upon. Putting specifics in a separate agreement would also make it easier in the future for the successors of the seller and the city to know more clearly what the intentions of the parties were. In constructing this or any other agreements for naming rights, I think the city should get some advice from professionals who have dealt with this before. Believe it or not, I have condensed my thoughts on this big time. We all want something better for the kids in the community and the economics of the area, but I also feel an obligation to see that the business of the city is conducted in a responsible way. I want to certainly commend the mayor, the city, and the seller for their work on this and tremendous support of youth sports in our community. I hope you feel the same.
As far as the naming rights, the agreement's fairly straightforward. That was one of the conditions from the very beginning. It's one of the, pretty much, the conditions precedent stood. If they didn't get that, there wouldn't have been a deal, based upon our conversations with their council. It's a pretty straightforward deal. Once the ballfield is established, it has a name. For as long as it's a ballfield, it will have that name. The road, same thing.
But it doesn't say that.
Keep in mind, the road is only the entrance road.
Yes.
Doesn't go past the entrance of the park.
Yeah, I understand.
Mayor, didn't we strike that a couple weeks ago, the naming rights? You left here and made a phone call?
No, the document that we had before us was naming rights of the complex, and that was...
So now we're talking about the naming rights of the facility?
No, we're talking about, so from the get-go, and I've met with councilman Epling, from the get-go, from the very first executive session that we had talking about this park, I've been very transparent from the inception. They were getting, from the very first meeting I had with them, we had a conversation, no, you can't name the complex, you can name the road and one ballfield, and that's what's in the document. So that's been, that's been, from the get-go, they got the name of the road, and Jim referenced 1 and 2, because there were two separate deeds on that property, that's why it's named 1 and 2. They since have transferred it, and even though it still is in all of our information, the map shows 1 and 2, it's part of the road is 1, the other part of the road is 2, they get a name, the road from Webster Road to the entrance of the park. They get the naming of that road and one ballfield. And that's what it's been from the inception of our dealings, and I even expressed it, Jim, I respect, everybody's got their, everybody's got their rights, and everybody can do their due diligence, and Jim has done his. But as I told him when we met, the naming rights they're getting are the naming rights that I have negotiated and told you all about and negotiated with them from the inception.
When we were here for the last time, there was a, they did have, we had gotten that agreement just 15 minutes before the last council meeting, they had changed that to the complex, and the mayor went back and straightened up, back to what it was originally. That's one of the things that they would not let.
Which is what we've said all along.
At what point did the restriction of what we would name the park come into play? That's something we did not discuss last night.
That is, that is correct. That was, that was later in negotiations. Actually, quite frankly, and if my memory serves me correct, Jim, when it was in the document that they got complex naming rights, and I said no, that was the alternative to not giving complex naming rights is, is that there could be no other name put on the complex but a name that would be significant to the city of Somersville, not some other individual or company name on the park.
It doesn't say that, though, does it? As far as no other individual or company name?
I believe it says it has to be somehow.
Named after the city of Somersville.
Yes.
So that means that if we wanted a theme for the park and we wanted to name it something special for the park, we couldn't do that? Is that correct?
Well, give me an example. What are you talking about?
Just like Shawnee Park.
Well, we're not gonna call it Shawnee Park.
I know that, a name like, a theme name like that. Shawnee Park is not called the City of Dunbar Park.
Are you not satisfied with being in Somersville?
No, why are we giving this up?
We're not giving it up. That's what we're saying we want.
What do you mean?
That's what we're saying.
Why is this restriction in here?
That's what was negotiated.
Do what?
That's what was negotiated.
Yeah.
But it was not part of the original contract.
So, Jim, I know the document doesn't say that the city couldn't name it Grizzly Park, but I feel without reservation that the family's not gonna object if we wanted to name the park Grizzly Park.
I was saying, Mayor, I'm saying is, that's not what the agreement says. Doesn't say we can do that. And that might be an intention. I'm not doubting the intention of the seller whatsoever, just reading the agreement for what it says. That's all.
There's nothing that says you can't name it City of Somersville Grizzly Park. There's no restriction to that. It just has to have a, it has to be named essentially after, something after, related to the City of Somersville.
Greg, I also feel that, and you know, Jim's statement is correct, it doesn't say what I'm saying, but I also feel if we wanted to name it just Grizzly Park, they would not object to that.
And that's, that's the impression I got from your testimony.
Okay, any other, any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question. This would be, we have a first and a second. For the first item on the agenda, which is, let me get back to my agenda, approval of the recreational sports complex purchase agreement, which is the document, counsel, that you have before you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay. Let the record show, if I'm hearing correctly, we have one objection.
Mayor, I'd also like to make a statement real quick, too. I've thought about abstaining from this vote because of its failing, but I have nothing to gain for this. I mean, I have nothing involved in it other than be honest with the council, and feel this is a fantastic deal for our town, for our community. Anybody that's played soccer or baseball, since I was a kid, we needed this, so I think it's a wonderful thing, and as we move forward, it's, I mean, the names of ballparks, Jim, all due respect, they name, they change names all the time. So I get that there are different aspects to do that, but, I mean, to me, a name is a name. It's not what that place is really gonna be. It is for our kids. It's for our town.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Okay, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of the non-cash charitable contribution IRS form 8283 recreational sports complex.
And essentially, all that does is just...
Let me get, let me go ahead, yeah. If I can get a first and a second, then we'll go into discussion. We have a first and a second, okay?
All we're doing is acknowledging that the city is receiving the donated property. We're not, we're not affirming, we're not certifying anything related to the value. In fact, we have nothing to do with the value. That's between them and me, what they can justify to the IRS.
So in a nutshell, Greg, it's just, my signature on this form just verifies that we are an entity that qualifies for this 407 donation, that we can, you know, that's all we're certifying, is that we qualify for somebody to give a donation.
And we receive.
Okay. Okay, any questions about the, any questions about the tax form? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the bargain purchase letter that you all had in your packet. I'll entertain a motion. Got a first?
Second.
And a second. Greg, do you want to speak to the...
Well, I didn't get a copy of it, if you want to come back. Essentially, it's all for the same, same purpose, so that they can take the deduction on the donated property. Other than $1 million, the city's giving nothing. We're getting nothing else today.
Okay. We got a first and a second. Any discussion on the letter?
I do. Greg?
Yes?
It says in here, this is to acknowledge that on 15th of November, mid-state properties transferred to the City of Somersville Municipal Corporation. All of donor's interest in the real estate described in this exhibit is... Are we doing that? I mean, have they conveyed all of their interest, I see, even considering the naming rights that are reserved?
Naming rights aren't interest in real estate. What we're getting is the actual real estate we're getting, what interest they own, 100% of the interest they own, and if we, real estate that's being transferred, it's on the exhibits that are attached to the documents.
What's on exhibit?
It was the exhibit.
Or is it just a property listing?
Just a real estate, yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I guess the question is, what does it mean donor's interest? If there's a reservation of naming rights, does it?
Naming rights will be personal, not real estate. Intangible.
So you think that's okay?
Yes.
I didn't want, pass the vote, and then the mayor acknowledged something that wasn't factual.
That's a good question. We are getting 100% of the real estate.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Okay, so council, with the passage of those three documents, we do have a closing set up for 1:00 PM tomorrow afternoon. We'll officially close on the property, transfer the money. Extremely excited, we've got a lot in the works, application that I feel confident we're gonna see some funding on, as well as today, I spent a good part of the morning working with our team on some other funding as well, and quite frankly, I'm excited to finally get past this stage and get the property purchased, and now, you know, it's for a brighter day tomorrow, and there's great things coming for the Somersville citizens, our community, and the greater community that we serve, and I know at the end of the day, everybody's excited about this. So look, look for great things to happen, and I hope sooner than later. I, you know, I get myself, sometimes I get the horse before the cart, because I want these funds and these things to work with the federal government, state government like this, and I find out it just doesn't work that way. So anyway, now it's time to get the committees activated, and as I've always stated, and I want to be clear about tonight again, that what I would call the first phase of this build-out is gonna be the trails, and the reason that's the first phase is because that right now is what's the attractive piece to the money that's out there, but that's gonna allow us to get the entrance in and then start on the trails, and then, of course, the first complex that we're gonna be, or the first sporting fields that we're gonna take care of is, and I've always said this, would be the soccer, because those are the kids in our community that don't have a home. So anyway, thank you, Greg. Thanks for coming, yep, thank you, sir, and I'll just bring all this tomorrow to...
Yeah, don't forget to check it.
Well, I'll bring the county information, I guess we're gonna wire them on this, so...
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, and thank you, council. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance to approve the current replacement pages, the Somersville codified ordinance. Counsel, that was included in your packet. Let me get to that portion of my agenda here. Again, this is just Walter Drain, the company that we have enlisted to make sure that we keep our ordinances up with state statute, and that's all this is, is, and you can see traffic code and general offenses code, that's what's being updated in those sections right there. So I'll entertain a motion. Have a first?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is first reading of draft ordinance 7112, or 712, not 7112, 712, BNO rate reduction ordinance. Counsel, in a nutshell, what this ordinance is, is the reduction of our current BNO, and it's the retail BNO that we're reducing. This takes effect, the ordinance will take effect July 1st, 2023, and this is cutting the retail BNO tax by 50%. So instead of being a half a percent, it'll be a half of a half a percent. So what is that?
Quarter.
Quarter of a percent, there we go. It'll be a quarter of a percent. So I'll entertain a motion.
The second.
We got a first and a second. Any questions? Are you making fun of my math, Stevie?
No. Gene was.
Gene was. Help me out, Gene, help me out. Okay, any discussion or questions? Mr. Recorder, these are your ordinances, you got any comments? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. The next item on the agenda would be the first reading of the draft ordinance of the 714 municipal sales tax ordinance, and this is the actual ordinance that will put a 1% sales tax on taxable items that are bought and sold in the city of Somersville to include purchases on the internet. And it also takes effect July 1st of 2023. I will add that all of this has been submitted to the state tax office, and the ordinance, along with all the work to do the zoning, the GPS zoning on the tax, has all been done and approved, and so all we gotta do is get the first and the second reading of the ordinance done, which is required by law for us to get done by January 1st, for it to take effect in July. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. The next item on the agenda, and that's exciting too, counsel, a lot of great things are gonna come as a result of that generated revenue for the projects, i.e., to help us with some potential financing and just revenues to help build out the parks and do the other things that we mentioned we would do in our Home Rule application. So the next item on the agenda is the mayoral proclamation, it's on the agenda, which is for Christian Heritage Week in West Virginia, November 20th through the 26th, as proclaimed by Governor Jim Justice. I'm gonna skip through this. This started with Governor Gaston Caperton, then on to Governor Underwood, Governor Manchin, Governor Tomlin, and now rests with Governor Jim Justice. Whereas 229 mayors from 139 cities, towns, and villages throughout the state of West Virginia have proclaimed Christian Heritage Week since 2001, and whereas local churches are encouraged, Amy will tomorrow launch a letter that will go out to every church in the area, asking them to recognize this in their relevant Sunday school lessons, sermons, patriotic song services, or youth programs, and prayer meetings, asking the entire community to participate in this. So now there, let it be known that November 20 through 26, 2022 Thanksgiving week is hereby proclaimed as Christian Heritage Week in the city of Somersville, West Virginia, and I invite all citizens to join me, join us in this observance in our city. Signed, Mayor Robert L. Schaefer, City of Somersville. So don't need a motion on it, it's a proclamation, it's just important that we do this. The next item on the agenda is the recorder's report.
Plenty of ordinances tonight, so no report received.
No report, thank you. Mayor's report, you don't get off that easy with the mayor, folks. Anybody surprised? Okay, got some big things shaking loose. First thing I want to tell you, counsel, please write this down, on December 6th, this is for the city employees and city council only, don't want any citizens to get confused. That's the city breakfast. Greg can come too, if you'd like. City breakfast is gonna be at the Somersville Arena and Conference Center, December 6th, which is a Tuesday, at 7:30 AM. And counsel, you're certainly invited for that, we'd love to see you come out and have breakfast with the city employees. Want to highlight some things taking place here in the city of Somersville. First of all, next, or actually, this Thursday, still getting off here, this Thursday, November 17th, 11 to 1, at the Somersville Arena and Conference Center, is our annual community Thanksgiving luncheon. This is a dine-in and enjoy the fellowship, friends, enjoy fellowship with friends, coworkers, and neighbors. It's important to stress that this year, it is a dine-in only meal. The only takeout will be for shut-ins, and we're asking you to preorder for shut-ins this year by calling the day before to the Arena and Conference, the Somersville Arena and Conference Center, between the hours of 11 AM and 4 PM. So that would be, Wednesday, November 16th, call 872-3722 to reserve orders for shut-ins. You know, if for some reason shut-ins don't pre-place their order, they will still be served at the conference center with the go-mills, but it's important that I stress, you know, the last couple of years, we've gotten flex on this and allowed for large carryout orders back to employment, people's places of employment. We're not doing this year, because what that does is that backlogs the to-go orders for the people that we really want to get them out to, and that's the shut-ins. So please come and fellowship with us for this incredible meal, to honor and recognize everything that we're thankful for, and to put us all in the spirit for next week for the Thanksgiving holiday on Thursday. Well, also, this is important, the city of Somersville, this is a big change for this year only. As always, the first Friday in December, we have our Christmas parade downtown Somersville, which will kick off at 6:00 PM. Immediately following the parade this year, all activities will move to Veterans Memorial Park. The parade's at 6:00, the activities at Veterans Memorial Park start at 7:30 to 10:00. And folks, we're gonna be, we're gonna have our light-up Holiday Smiles, which is the $30,000 grant that the city of Somersville won from Mon Power... is the $30,000 grant that the city of Somersville won from Monpower, a first energy company. We applied for a grant in their tire footprint. We won the $30,000. And in our grant that was written, I give many kudos to Annabeth Anderson, in that grant, we selected the light display to be put at the park. So first, Monpower, First Energy, they're bringing an executive in that night that'll have a word. Their light display will go on, and then the balance of the lights in the park will go off. Along with, we're going to have the Nicholas County High School choir there. There will be wagon rides, campfires, cookies, and hot cocoa, and Santa and Mrs. Claus will be there. Also, the first 500 children will receive a free holiday t-shirt, and these are children's shirts, sizes small to large. We've got 500 Christmas t-shirts that will be given out. It's for the first 500 kids. This entire event's being sponsored by, of course, Monpower, a first energy company, Nicholas County Veterans Memorial Park, the city of Somersville, and Peak Utilities, which is the company that was contracted to put the light display up for Monpower. So it's sure to be a great evening, again, from 7:30 to 10 o'clock, all of those activities in the park. So there will not be anything downtown except for the parade. Kids come to the park to take in Santa and Mrs. Claus. So that's on December 2nd, the first Friday in December. Also want to highlight, the Greenbrier Valley Theater presents Mountain Home Christmas. This is a Christmas dinner theater at the Somersville Arena and Conference Center, put on by the Greenbrier Valley Theater. This is Saturday, December 3rd. Encourage you to come out. It's going to be a great meal, starting at 6 o'clock with appetizers, dinner at 6:30, and showtime is 7:30 PM. Tickets are $100 per couple, $50 per single. Encourage everybody to come out. Tickets are now on sale. All you have to do is go to the Arena and Conference Center or call out there at 872-3722. Let me see what else we have here, Council. Want to, want to highlight another exciting thing from the city. We had our auction of our property last, what was that, last Thursday? Yeah, last Thursday, the bid openings, and in a very exciting way, the Jones Hole was a very attractive property going for $340,000 to a young man out of Ona, West Virginia. I got to tell you, the kid was elated. I mean, just, it was his dream. And it's, it's really kind of funny. He came up to me right before the auction and told me how bad he wanted it, and you could just see. And he wanted it bad, and even after the fact, he came up to me and said, it might be a little delay getting my cabin on it, but he paid $340,000 for it.
Actually, he paid $370,000.
That is true, yeah.
What was the payment fee?
Yeah, with the fee for the, the real estate fee that's charged to the auctioneer. So he wanted that property bad.
It was an awfully unique property, sure, but I didn't know it was that unique.
Yeah, wow. But anyway, we're excited for him. Actually, the neighbors were excited. He'd been down there and met them. They were excited, wanted somebody like him to take ownership of the property. So $340,000 plus his fee that he paid, so he paid about $380,000 for the property. With that, we also sold the Terra property. We sold it for $16,000, straight up. City had a little bit more than that in it, but I think we kind of had a wash that day. So, you know, and, and it's, the owner, the new owner of the Terra lots is out of Nettie. It was a lady that lives in Nettie, so our hope is, is that their, their objective there is to build, build a house in Terra. Something that I forgot to mention about the Thanksgiving, the Thanksgiving dinner, which is Thursday, anybody that's interested in the Somersville area, and I'm talking Canvas, anywhere that MTA travels, if you want to ride to the dinner, if you'll call the day before to ATM, the director, Tim Thomas, who's always great to partner with and collaborate with, Tim has offered that for free of charge, that they'll pick people up to get them to the Thanksgiving dinner on that day. All you need to do to have those arrangements made is call the day before to MTA, and that number's 872-5872. Council, I'd also like to make you aware of the Nicholas County Family Treatment Court graduation. Judge Callahan and his crew do a fantastic job with the Family Treatment Court. On the, their next graduation is slated for Thursday, December 1st, at the courtroom at 11:00 AM. You're invited to attend. We got an invitation here. If you've never been, Council, I would encourage you to go. It's unfortunate, I can't go. I've got a bylaws committee scheduled for the Nicholas Intervention Coalition that I'm actually chairing on December 4th, 11 to 1 that day, so I will not be able to attend. Gary, maybe you can attend for the city. But Council, you're also invited, and I would encourage you to attend if you've never been to one of those graduations. It's quite an accomplishment, and again, I commend Judge Callahan and his team for the incredible job they do with those drug court, both the family and the teen drug courts. The last note I'd like to make, Council, is there's been much hype and excitement over the commercial filming that we're going to do in the city. We're actually filming five two-minute commercials. The businesses and restaurants have been selected. Those announcements will be, have been made, and then tomorrow, I guess they're also going to announce others that will be in there, but not necessarily Mr. or Mrs. Claus shopping or eating, dining in their place. The shooting will take place on Thursday in the day and in the evening. There will be both day and evening shoots. It's a total of 10-minute shoot. It'll be the city, it's going to pick up a whole, a lot of additional filming. These commercials will be aired on both CBS and Fox. I do want to caution people, local people will be able to see the commercials on social media. The commercials will actually run in other areas. The whole idea and concept is to promote the city of Somersville, our festive city, and it's all about promoting people to come shop, visit our festive city, eat and stay in the city of Somersville through the holidays. So a lot of excitement. I actually.
How long is the commercial?
There's going to be five two-minute commercials. Five two-minute commercials, and they're all going to be different, highlighting different businesses and places to shop in Somersville.
Do you know when it's going to air?
Oh, yes. I'm glad you said that because that's the real one of the reasons. So the air date was supposed to be the 17th. It's calling for rain on Thursday. They don't want to shoot in the rain, so we are going to, we're going to do the shoot on Wednesday, the 16th, instead of the 17th, and that's due to weather. And I think that's a smart move because just to really capture our festive city and Mr. or Mrs. Claus, where kids, we're getting them on a special visit from the North Pole to spend a day in the city of Somersville. So you'll see them out and about at our businesses and restaurants. Okay, let me just run down through this real quick. Okay. That's, that's all I have. Council, any questions about anything that I've passed along tonight?
Mayor, I'd like to say thanks to you for your support of veterans. Also, for showing up in the rain the other day. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your service as well.
Yep, thank you, and of course, to all veterans. And, you know, it was unfortunate, we thought we'd, you know, the Veterans Council, they're the ones that set the date, they thought they hit a home run because the parade was on Saturday, and it rained all day Friday, and then right as the parade start here comes down for, and yes, we got, we got soaked in wind. But again, anytime you participate in something like that and you think about what it's all about, and it's really about me recognizing those that paid and certainly had tours of duty that were much more complicated than mine ever dreamed of being, and then ultimately, we always remember those that paid the ultimate price, and that was their life for what we enjoy today as our freedom.
And the families.
Exactly, yes. Sacrifices of the family. So Jim, thank you for bringing that up. Okay, Council reports. Okay, hearing none? Oh, I guess I should make sure there are none. Okay, anybody got any comments? I just got a, okay, I got some, some real quick things that I want to cover in executive session, Council, so what I would ask, that we move into executive session. We have a first?
And a second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign?